Audio, you have to sort the audio.
Alright, please, just as we are about to, let me give you one of, let me put in invite, the, a number of the pieces he, uh, cast his name here with us to the person, and that's, is he to educate them, so please, open your mouth.
Thank you. No, no, please, there is no opening of our right now. So, it is why it seems to happen, to be everybody. We want to, we want to engage as excellency as soon as possible, as soon as possible, because everyone has a, so those of you who have also asked you, I want to ask you to visit your mother, come to man, like, if you are going to ask you your question. And, and everyone of us, don't expect to ask you anything, they all are here. Alright, number one.
Let's go, make it through, make your mind up.
Uh, to say, which is, uh, probably, so, uh, so, uh, yes, this is, uh, what, so, uh, what, to hear the final, uh, response, certainly, as the, uh, these inventory, yes, it was, or beauty, so.
Who will deal with you? The trouble will happen around you. I don't have time to answer. Okay. We are done with the five questions. Let's finish them. This is the question. Okay, I guess that if you're asking down. No, no, I'm sorry. I would not allow you to ask a question if you're asking down. If you want to leave and we are going to start all over again. Hold on. I need you. I need that. I need that. I need that. Our president, sir, are you listening? So, I hope that I like this problem. In Nigeria's system, you know somebody that we know has a problem. So, the thing is that, though you are letting the mass of people which are poor, they are putting their teeth in the same heart as we. System to appear. It's a system that works on Nigeria. Even people are trying to like work on it. Like, how we, like, how we need to work to see what I get. How can we like explore that opportunity, I mean? To make, to try and get that. So, as I said, we don't have to talk about it. I like your point, but I will just make that. Thank you so much, thank you so much. So, I love this. Hold on. Hold on, man, hold on, man. Hold on, man. Hold on, hold on. Hold on, hold on. Hold on, hold on. There we are. As the fact machine after what I've done, I have no question. And we must establish together, we believe in this situation. What I think, on what's what I can do, it comes to be, it is most, actually have, you know, a very well structured lines and competence and leaders. So, this is kind of trying to work. If we, that, that we see. That we, uh, uh, this, 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 this is no job. This is no job, so I'm looking to do about. I believe I'm paying so much money, waiting for my next, the topic is to be, it's a thing that I don't know what's to go into. I find it so expensive that the structure that makes this issue, we do, we are trying. Thank you so much. So, we will want to do next to us, say. Like I said, if you're asking down, we are not asking. I want to have you through our way. My question here is. Our lives that we are short lived, supported, and we are. We are students of the arts. Security must be assured on. The president's report of our. This was what was moving into, uh, obviously, God want to have it to stay there. We are sure of security. My question here is, and how is it that practice the Nigerian experience? Thank you so much. So, we did two more questions and then we are out. Let's go. If you're not speaking, you are not asking. If you're not speaking, you are. Ask yourself, uh. More than one. His excellency, he's not found. Remember that tomorrow, what? On this election. That is true of. Something that was great, we got interest in this country. So, without statistics. Between teachers and teachers. You can say that he has a great, right? Now, the truth, everybody listening to you. But without those statistics, I'm not much. What's wrong? Number eight, which one? Like, market. Please do not say, yes, this is good. With our own, our life. We have, that's what we want. The two things that are really, lots of. That what is. To see. That's all. So, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. So, hold on, hold on, hold on. I mean, I won't ask person. So, more, more, more than everyone. So, I also want a woman to ask me this. So, so.
Thank you. Let's, let's.
Everybody, let me sit down. Let me sit down, please.
Just let me talk to you on that.
Okay, my camera, I walk into here.
This is not. All right, all right, please. Let's ask the other person. I'm. That's enough for now. All right, so we have five questions. And you also tell me, because we do not ask this question. You will not, you will not stop down. You will not stop down. All right, hold on.
They are watching from the studio live, as we can see, it's still growing on. At the Stanel Dome. Peter B has arrived. Answer couple of persons from the youths or the students. As we can see. But sometimes we need to apologize for the poor network. In case if you are out there, you aren't hearing us proper. You aren't getting every information you need. Really say, come down to the venue or still be on the Zoom. We shall take advantage of Onicha. Because there's a whole lot of things happening there. Now, you think Obi is running up, right?
Yes, Peter B just addressed the youth and students in Anambra State at the Stanel Dome. And he also took some questions from them and responded adequately to those questions. You can see the massive support and love that Peter B has down here in Anambra State amongst the young people and students, to be precise. As you can see, most of them were just around him and, you know, seeking to snap pictures. Most of them had their phones out, recording the event. And, you know, that is to show you the, the fellowship that Peter B has in the east, especially in Anambra State. Uh, so, um, I think the program will be rounding up shortly, as we have, uh, more programs to go today. Um, Peter B's wife is still in Anambra State, she is at, uh, All Saints Cathedral. And there's also going to be a rally, so you can see that it's going to be a, a long day. So, it's going to be, everything is going to be done swiftly. So, uh, we are going to be witnessing the rounding up of the event at this Stanel Dome. As Peter B moves forward, uh, down to Onicha, where the rally is going to be held.
And do not forget that Peter Obi is from Agonu, Anambra State. Everything you've been watching in Nigeria, the movement you've been following up. Don't forget that the mind behind the sin is from Anambra State here. Then if we do not give him the massive support, who will? So, I would tell you, I'm going to be shocked with a massive turnout. The judge just more than I spoke to a candidate that told me that even he himself was organizing about three thousand supporters. Three thousand people are willing to go there and give Peter B the massive support. I was like, wow. So, if you can organize three thousand people, the rest of the candidates. I had to tell you that also the country drive field today, I mean, it's going to be field to the brink. Yeah, as we can also see, we can see, um, Senator Victor Media, live and present. He's so, so happy, they're together taking pictures and not just him alone. Representatives either. All the members of schools, um, or other members of, um, the parties, even the party chairman. They are present over here. So, information will keep coming through, as we follow them back to back. Do not forget the Labour Party political allies are there, intact, okay? Making sure things are working out proper. As we also know, people are saying, um, security, secure, security. We would be done with security in Onicha. Everything has been taken care of, so what you have to do? Get yourself down to the location. Get yourself down to the venue. Have your seats. And I expect the candidate very soon is going to land in Onicha. And a whole lot of things are going to happen. I mean, the good things.
Of course, of course, of course. Let's not forget that, uh, we also have the wife of the vice presidential candidate of the Labour Party, Haji Aisha. And back and made, uh, presence at the All Saints Cathedral today. Uh, as they address the women leaders in Anambra State. So, uh, we can see that the, the program is going to be a rich one. And we've been following the program so far. Uh, we're going to be, uh, switching to the program shortly, so that you can witness, uh, what is happening in, uh, All Saints Cathedral in Onicha. Uh, so they can follow up the programs. I think, uh, they have started addressing the women leaders already and sensitizing them on how to vote. Because, you know, a lot of people, um, did, were beginning to know the logo of the Labour Party. You know, we've done a lot of sensitization and publicity on this material. You see, uh, you can deliver to mobile campaign. You see, um, papa, I can do. So, the best part of the sensitization that will be carried out today at the All Saints Cathedral, uh, for the women leaders, so that they know where to vote. I've heard, you know, I've heard it's being said, uh, across Nigeria, that women and youth make up the larger quota of voters.
Sure, you know, women are the larger army.
Yeah.
All this is a processization.
Yeah.
And it is good to do the need for.
Yeah.
I think I'm going to say, do not sell your vote, your vote is your rights and it's balance, okay? Move from the peanut and sell your future. It could have passed up this morning when I was going through the media and asked his people or his, um, members. Maybe you'll vote for seventeen year mind, have it in your mind. And the thing is that the person you want to vote for, the future of your own children will build on the future of that person. Some of the youths, some say the inmates. So, those who are the youths, the youth who to vote for. And if the person's future is good for the children, fine. And if person's future is not good for the children, also fine. So, I think, right in your mind there, you know who to vote for. And cast your vote. Now, don't forget that the TV keeps on adding you. I said, four or five days remaining for the election proper. I think we keep an eye on you, okay? So, let's get back to what is happening over there on the All Saints Cathedral.
Oh, we're going to be switching now to the town hall meeting, uh, holding at the All Saints Cathedral. So that, uh, we get to watch what's happening there with methods and.
I am shocked. I admit.
Abba. All these are students. They're starting school. You know what they use WhatsApp? They find that WhatsApp, they talk rather. It is. Somebody comes up like that. They don't know what I said now. That's what I'm talking about. You never know. The child of God. I can't believe. It can shake you off. It does not want to check you off. There's nobody who will know for. I don't want to do. How to protect their, their child of God?
All right, no, let, I've not finished. So, let me talk and let me.
Hello.
Gyalun to, gyalun to, bigo, I'll seal top.
Hello. When you hear a vote is invalid. It could be that. You see this finger now for inside LP box, right in the middle of the box. Is that not so? When the finger cross between LP and APM. And they don't know who go collect the votes, they don't want trouble. If you give LP, APM go say now our own. If you give APM, LP go say now our own. Then go call them invalid votes.
I will go now, he will not be scared, Kaga. He may go, oh, did they teach you? Yeah, I met you alive, they do, yeah, I met you alive, nah, nah. Oh, did they teach you? LP, I will go for Labour Party. And I make a time to learn. Make to go do something, we're going to learn. I make it go. Now, he surely need to know his excellency, how blue president of Nigeria. May teach you. Yeah, I met you. Oh, no, I. He never see a girl, I can die, I could see the. I get, you know, no, 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 no. When it's time for a decision, when I get. I will go, no, my response, I tell you, I can, he will go, she will, I can, you know, no, no. Now, he can add the. Now, they teach you to argue. I make to know, I make. To.
Oh, my, can. Make the vote invalid. And another that can make the vote invalid. After you have done printed. After you put your finger in the right place.
If you see I can, they, they teach you.
Then that finger, the ink never dry.
Ink, you can, they can, I can, I can.
You can't touch another place.
If you play, I may be go.
And you can't enter another party box.
Oh, but I know. Now, he can, I can, I can, he may see. He can, I can, I make to run a boss.
Then anybody that sees it will say you voted for two parties.
I would say, no, they can go to the button now.
And they will say your vote is invalid.
Oh, no, I'm not for them, they make to do, they, he can, I can, make to that, never was a crossing, he may go. I will go, my, the, but now I'm okay to. Oh, but, oh, but you. Oh, my, can, no, 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 no. They are, they, they, no, no. What I education can I, 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 I was see. Now, they not in a hurry. Oh, this year, come here, we like a pizza. But he, they fold down, why to be? Oh, my, boss, I make to know, oh, maybe go.
You know why we are bothering to talk about this? Do you know why we are taking time to talk about this? Every one vote is important for Peter Obi.
Oh, for vote, I want to, but his excellency, Peter Obi, you know. And I told him, I may be, I may be.
One vote can make a difference.
Oh, for vote, we can be, we, yeah. Now, he will not be, this, this, this is the way, yeah. We, we not, I can, I will be, we, we may be, we may be.
One vote can separate the winner from the loser.
Oh, for vote, yeah, I may be, I may be. Oh, yeah, maybe, oh, yeah, maybe.
That is why.
Oh, my, yeah.
We must vote right.
I can vote, we need to come.
Know the logo of the party.
Malu logo. Logo of LP.
And vote. Vote inside the box only.
You can, they teach you box. I'm not lying.
And be careful, don't let your finger touch any other place.
They will not, I can, I can go to make to a boss.
Woman talk to woman.
Woman understand.
Woman talk to woman.
Understand.
Do we understand ourselves this morning?
I got a little.
Do we really, really understand ourselves this morning?
I got a little. If I go, I want to know, no, no.
Let me tell you something.
Yeah, I think, oh, who?
Ainek.
Ainek.
At the end of the voting.
Okay, so you haven't won that.
They have what they call gender disaggregated data. That means they will say how many men voted? How many females voted?
No, I mean, I don't want. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not. I'm not to see, I'm not, I'm not. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not.
In Oshun State. Last Oshun gubernatorial elections. The last governorship election for Oshun.
Oshun State, last governorship election.
Ainek said.
Ainek.
Women.
Oh, one.
That voted.
Need to vote.
Were over fifty-two percent of the total voters.
Were over fifty-two percent of the voter. Yeah, I'm not telling you, I'm not.
Tell me how women will go to the governor.
Yeah, this is how, I need to see.
And say, this is what we need as women.
Yeah, come, I need to see that governor, see, I, 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 I.
And the governor will say, who are you women, what can you do?
I see, can you? Can you?
We. Can.
I'm sorry, please. And it's not so strong. It's not so bad.
No. If we withhold our votes, we can. If we don't vote, something will happen, no?
No, if I get, let me bow.
And when we vote, better go happen, no?
If I do our vote, I get, I may not.
That is why. That is why. We want to help our party.
Yeah, for.
I'm bigger than that, young and easy. That's only that, thirty, thirty point nine, twenty six, that's. He is two point five, two hundred. And I want to show them. And they can't see the inside. And they scare me. That's all we want to do, yes. Shouting someone. And it's important for Oshun. And you don't have to. Force of the villa. It can't affect our. Get your people's vote, over half. Over half the three month. Over half. Play a last year. A smart guy. Over. Five hundred million. Water flow. A couple of million dollars. Over half a million. One. And when they are so young, they are born, big flower. And they can't break our heart. Over the party. They can go, host and tea. The power. They can't, they're spotted, possibly, one point one billion dollars. And they can go there. Seven link to us, go at the app. Think one point four billion water tea. What is Nigeria? That's.
That's true.
Our government's stocks last year is. Eighty point nine trillion. Uh. If you have it as this. About thirty billion. And we are two hundred and ninety million. Plus, two hundred and eighty billion people. This is a number of three thousand that, that, that. A corner like this. And there are stars that have a population. They are one million people. They control that one thousand square feet that are planned. That other spot is about four hundred sixty billion dollars. So, my, yeah, on that, your target is a company, you can't have a go. Now, this is all the things, this is the leader. Now, the leader, let me tell you, everything he is that is, is the leader. I say, if I say what. People, you not go to school, you want me? Someone else, they say, young boys don't want to go to the public school. Someone else, they want to go to the public school. Public school, now, I'm just saying today, it's okay. They are from. Every community, now, I'm just saying. Everybody, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not. So, they do that, they are like. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not. Everybody should have a boss, boss. So, oh, 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 oh. It's everything. It can't, it's not. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not. And I left the party. This is seven.
What is that?
So, what we, what we want to do? Is to release our leaders from the function. And let this. Let the vote, let it, let it. So, most of us, the most of us, the stuff you know, you, and you must. Probably to get what you want. And that, that's. Everybody, you see, the board, the senior person, the senior person. They can't. No, this is not, this is not, this is not. No, no. No, no. It is, it is, it's not a company, not a company. Yeah? I'm not, I'm not.
You're not a.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. More, I'm not. I want to, I want to. Let me, let me, I want that. You want your people, you want your, you want yourself to be my.
All questions.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not. I'm not, I'm not. Another, another. Hey, hey. What was, what was? France to me, me. I'm doing my chair, Franco. But it's so late, it's late, and you see, I'm not. I'm, I'm. It is hard, it's hard. It's only for. It's a time, I'm not, I'm not. And I think it's. And we are two hundred and ninety million people. Plus two hundred and eighty billion people. This is another one from three thousand years ago. A corner like this. And there are thousands. Half of our population. They are one million people. They are one million people. Is you who like that? Not that. Not that. A lesson is a lesson. Is you that we thought of playing something about it? Without that. So my dear people. I thank you so much. I want to let you know. I'm glad. I got to play. What is this here? The power this morning. I'm wondering everything you are supposed to do. But let's just listen. This is what we want to do. When I come next time. We are discussing. Who will be the leader? I thought so. I said. I said I don't think there's no way of doing this. Now. And the order is this one. I would be listening. I'm wondering what it is that we have to do. I mean, please. So. Doesn't push it. But think of. I'm wondering why you don't care. So now it's good for. It makes the more. Oh, no, shut it down. Because they didn't speak. It's a situation. No one can. Somebody else in this world. He said. Brother has a mistake. And she made it easy on her purpose. And you can't do that. And they can't. I think my credit is very important. It's you. Oh, I'm saying, it's not everything. It's not everything. It's something we are asking. Why would this guy pass me? Why would this guy? Watch that. If you want to hear what I'm saying. How would he start? He didn't have. He didn't have. He said, this is what. I'm the only. I'm the only one. Yeah, it's all about me. Yeah. Yes, it should be about turn it. Thank you. I wish you. I wish you. If you did. I didn't win. I didn't know how hard it was to find that. I had not. Like the law. So we are not good. So we are not scared. A change. It is. I think it was for. Now I have shown. I'm going to show them. And so. And. Brother. And I love shop. And we have been like, God is for the people. And I'm telling what we respect for that. We have people now and what is together. You give me a big cake. See you. For somebody to come. The smallest professor. Of an institution. So now we're talking about creating wealth. This is the market. We have. And so. And we're discussing this well. And I'm telling you. That's similar to our past. You guys are. I'm reading. This is put my edge. And head of my first professor. And what did he do? He was like, I'm supposed to be sad. But only to tell me. You're not going to combine it. Anyone. Why is that? So. Another one. We don't want dead, but we give it. Don't argue with me. Thank you guys. Thank you guys. The chapter two people. There are three months on ten days of four. The chapter of the two million people. And we are seven people. And chairman is the two. And we know what we. Okay, we got books. And we are really young. So we are chairman. Not a chairman. A professor. Of a university. All of them are professors. Who are before me. And I want to not like to see. None of them are seen as quite a nation. No, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry. Everybody. Any heads of our past. I shall relax the people of our past. Our voters. Over and six straight on. Remember. People go. For us to get to that and everything. After. You got your. Other. South one. It's very bad. You can see what I'm doing. You're not going to. But it's very important. You guys. One of the best professionals we ever had in town. You don't do that. You. You guys. One of the best professionals we ever had in town. You don't do that.
... Si koum ba le fa, si Moule ka chou la chou, ouya pa la koumasta Iwam kika che masta Kilou pa bois, kilou pa baka Tama ni de westan, chey na ri la Fokara yo, ke beli soua Me fritou re pa ya ke loukou ya ni soua To la re re, ya ni ke beli na souba Ya ya, pa ni koum koum, ke beli na souba Kuni soua, loukou wa Ya dis kita, ya nomche touela Kimi kasi la, maradoula Joulo koutela, Emmanuela Loukou wa, jou jou wa Kuni jou wa, jou jou wa Kuni jou wa, jou jou wa Koule wa ya, jou jou wa Asse
Biko, omou wa ni, ite lemde na ni Ouwa na di na ni, ms kunou ga ba zon i ke onu Biko, omou wa ni, ite lemde na ni Biko, kifai e kwa deba kaya li me bi Ifa deba ni, bife magret, bito bitalo ndia nambra Ah, aman no excellency Ou koufeng ka apemi fai gen Omou wa ya kouna Ou zo Aboukouan ou na anoromo, wa ya ke wetarom pa keba Biko Biko Ma to ne kika, saikete kika, kouso ma ke Ou ya kouna, koukou koukou saikete ni ya Koukou de kara Please, ala koukou Ma to ne, koukou koukou ya Ma to ne, kese kika kika koukou kika Biko Biko, ma kese kaka kaka, kese kika kaka Ma to ne, kika kika Biko, ma to ne, kika kika Ma to ne, kika kika Eh, difista, oume ya e Ou ya, ma di se, tau Ou so ye, tau Tafou kie, ou so ye Biko, na to, to General, general, onto check me Tafou ni ke General, general, onto check me De kara
Biko, is not true, general Ita, wa Ou koukou, koukou Is not true
Oh, asekou koukou, atama, ya nombe levi Ya, 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 ya Ya, 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 ya Ya, 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 ya Ya, 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 ya Ya, kouspa ou feli So dis peti be biche La portafond le ni Ni, 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 ni Slap on, ni, ni, ni Ya, ya, ya
Ouwa ya, boni na Bonin na Ou, ou, sou ya, ou ya Ou ya, ou ya Ou, ou, ya, ya Ou ya, ya Ya, ya Ya, ya, ya Ya, ya Ou, ya Ya, ya Ya Ya, ya Ya Ya, ya Ya, ya Ya Ou ya, ou ya, ya Ya Ya, ya Ya, ya 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 You bad, you bad, you bad You bad, you bad, you bad You bad, you bad All from here, all from here To understand, people, that To understand This time All from here To understand You bad, you bad Yes, bad, you bad This time The other Oh, bad Bad, you bad This time Bad, you bad, you bad
What does it say? It's written here
Alright Please, give me a break, please Please, give me a break All night, all night Yeah, we talk Ma, we don't start We talk, we talk We talk, we talk We talk, we talk All right, here One, two But now In the house, this time It's the one It's the time they go, where But now Ya Excuse me, you're supposed to be four Please, me, I'm too shy for Why, why Why not for me Just, just, why No, that, that But that's a little, please, that That, that You were not there, okay, you are Okay, you are not there Thank you, sir Please, sorry I can see that I'm still Let's Oh I'm sorry Please, please Yes Please, keep our respect Please, my wife She is, yes, she's not lying Please, my wife Please Oh, yeah Please Hello, DJ Hello, DJ That's how, that's how Fuck it DJ Give me some, give me some DJ, please Yeah, that's what I want Yeah What's up, man What's up, man Good night That's your work Oh, hey Hello Hello Happy 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 Oh, yeah I do so sad Oh You watch the fucking show The bad guys They die Ou pouwa ya, kikou Ou pouwa ya, kikou Mom, you watch the baby Not to get so Not that much of them I look I look And I try and try to see who are the bad I don't know that the people better pass for the damage All of them did very well Not so All of them did very, everywhere So I want to give all of them peace If it doesn't come up here It's not a good But everybody can go Please, stop down at the next The foundation It's time It's time It's from the Yes So We have finished our petition And all of all people in hand, that's for what? Because, this is the By the time I I feel all All of the bad Who said this, we want them And the bad son, the bad sons Uma to uma Please, my very Biko, Biko Yeah I'm not like a bad person Biko, Biko I like to let it go, but no Oh, Biko Ou ya, ou ya, je t'aime Biko Biko, Biko I like to let it go, but no Biko Biko, Biko Biko, Biko Alright, alright Did you remember, did you remember I said the one Reach Eh Women, when I was talking, I say you do what, number one? Reach out Did we talk about that?
Two, five minutes
Biko no
Biko no
Biko no I think that, what they care Do you remember, number one? Reach out Number two? Engage Do you remember? Number three? Reckonize Number four? Take ownership And finally Protect your mandate Is that what we talked about?
I know, I know, I'm very good at that
Is that what we talked about? Please, don't forget as you're going home We continue We have our father in the house A revered father of the land A father of the nation Somebody that was Somebody that was privileged to be with at the national conference in 2014. Our father, we want to give him the microphone this morning. To greet us. And give us his goodwill. Let's put our hands together to our father.
Thank you. Thank you.
Nne mama. Nne mama. Nne mama. Nne mama.
No, no, no. Okay. Okay, okay.
Please, God, Kado Yebu. See why I want to be God. Honorable, see why I want to be here when you want my career. Oh, whenever. Wait.
Ahah. Nne. I ain't no conah coono. Oh, where he fe? She like a woman. Hey, brother. Hannah plan rigging. Hannah plan anything. God has infinite powers. All powers belong to. Oh, what is he need? Get bro me boa. Oh, we want to send up the singing it. Thank you. Sit down. I don't want to take your time. But there are simple things we must do. By the power and grace of God. There must be 2023 election. There must not be any interim government. And the result of the 2023 election is predictable. By May. By May 2023. My brother will be sitting as Assarok. And I am a genie, my Assarok. Get one, win.
Thank you. Darlo, what did you call me? Colony, I call. Okay, may life. Please, God, Jenny, no, no, no. Jenny, not gallery. When enough seats in the gallery, don't block the entrance. Please, God. DJ Famous, hit us, hit us with music. Please, God. Wait, if you're a young man, this is an event for women. Please, leave the hall if you're stealing women's phone. Keep your phones well. All young men should leave the hall. Go to the men arena. Go to the gallery. We'll meet you there. DJ Famous, hit us. Yes, give us our seat so our women are standing.
Organize.
Wait, wait, before we organize. Before we go organize. Before we organize. There are so many very, very special ladies in the house this day. Um, I have recognized our convener for this meeting and also our mother. And our incoming first lady already. I want to also recognize with us this morning Senator Chris Ayew. You're welcome. Okay, okay. Um, you know, me, I know all of you. All of you by face, you're all women, so you're all my people. As national women leader, you're all my people. So if I don't call you by name, you're all my people. Yes, so they call me Mama Label. My friend here says, no, I'm Mama Sugar. Because you said I'm the sugar mommy of.
This DJ is on fire. Fire. Fire.
Alright.
Don't sleep.
Wake up.
Wake up.
Collect your money.
Please, wake up.
Collect your money.
Wake up.
Vera, go get a mula.
Wake up.
Ah, ladies here. Peter, you need to dance. And we are rehearsing for Peter's big three dance. Please, let us in the house together, ladies, ladies, ladies here. Ah, Mr. DJ.
DJ Music. Now, they're not getting DJ Music. Please, God.
Mr. DJ, what do you have?
One million, million, one million, I change DJ Music.
Yeah. Don't sleep. Don't sleep. Wake up.
Collect your money.
Collect your money. Wake up.
Collect your money.
Collect your money. Please, wake up.
Collect your money.
We don't collect our money already. When Peter Obi comes as president, we go collect all our money. Thank you, Mr. DJ. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Ladies, you're all doing so well. You all dance so beautifully. Thank you for your patience. You've been so, so, so participative. I love the ladies of Anambra State. May God bless you. Oh, yeah, your women leader said she answered the amen since you didn't want to answer amen. Alright. We now want to hear from the convener of this meeting. Woman talk to woman. No, I don't hear una now. Ah, make no fall my hand now. Umu uwi. Woman talk to woman. I have heard this side though. Let me hear the umu uwi on this side. Woman talk to woman. No woman. No woman, no new Nigeria. No woman. No woman. It is my pleasure at this moment to invite, to speak to us. And I know we will understand. Yes, oh. Her Excellency. Her Excellency, Mrs. Margaret Peter Obi. Our incoming first lady. Put your hands together, ladies. Put your hands together. Nne mama. Nne mama. Umu uwi Adambra. Obina somo, so obina somo. Obina somo, so obina somo. Jesus. Biana number is then time. Please, God, Nde noni lo. Unu weki bagote nenu. Please, God. Darlo no, darlo no. Ke weki, nuifende ku. Please, God, Nde ne. Anumayo, please, God. Mpa tu darlo, please, God. Please, God. The former governor of Anambra State. Okwadike Ibuku. Chief Chukwe Meka. Easy fair. And make a negi. Otu bi, biwa no, yala itata. Darlo no. Your Excellency. Darlo. The national woman leader of our great party. Labor Party. Labor Party. Mama papa begin. Ne, ne, na wa. Ne, ne, ma wa. Members of the presidential campaign committee of the Labor Party. I won't fail to recognize our own. A daughter of the soil. Tedi e kweme. Please, God, cool out. Talk I have for you know, Tedi, oye benlo ku. Please, God, Nde ne with backland. A veteran broadcaster, a lady that is recognized in the media. The former senator in Imo State, Senator Chris Ayew. Other members of the presidential campaign committee here present. State women leaders, state coordinators. All my former commissioners. Former commissioner. For women affairs, my first commissioner for women affairs. The young, the lady that never gets old in Anambra State. Dr. Ego Uzozie. She was my first commissioner for women affairs. My second commissioner for women affairs. Lady Amreta Abata. Dr. Koye Chi. Was our first commissioner for education in Anambra State. Doctor Anaway. If I in a choir, I'll go. Malo ne. She was our commissioner for social orientation. A lady I call my sister, Sister Azuka. Was the commissioner for local government and chief city matter. My sister, Sister Angosi Okoye. Former commissioner for finance. The accountant general of Anambra State. There are lots of people that have worked with us here, S.A. And there's somebody here. Oh, I am never. Oh, one wine. All over with me, but all commissioner. Get that. Oh, me go, we a proud girl daughter. Nde girl. Former commissioner for women affairs. Did amazing ways. All faith-based leaders here present. Market women are different support groups. And most especially. My friends that go about with me. Ijoma Stella. A national treasurer of the Labor Party. Unu gafu that Labor Party, I be very party friendly. And I'll do something I've never done before in my career as politics. I want to recognize. Can Kenesian name boom? My dear mother, Mrs. Frances Brownson. Darlo no. Obviously, you know, I'm a, on them, they are. Oh, yeah, more of there. Darlo no. Our different support group, excellent ladies. All of them. Nde lolo anyolo na. Labor Party. Umu okeno ever. The press, the security. Please, God, oh, yeah, my coral, chineka, pogori, and oh, yeah. Please, God. The press, you know, that bala. If I got swear ba, weibo. Woman leader. No vexes, Stella go to tell you what in I talk. Please, God, obviously, what if I in a so? I got what's here. I forgot. When you have, uno e rica ever. Oh, yeah, my coral, chineka, pogori, and oh, yeah, I come back. Obi somasore ne. I put on tata. Where Fu muu wa i. Umu wa i Anambra State. Even who goes in tata. Uno from now here in there. Oduro fale. Ufodwa amaro. Oh, they go. Unu bano loe ba. Ona ga, ten years. But tata. Akomuno ku. Uno potani kimi kimi. Obi somasore ne. Darlo no. Uno go see, eh, we're mado. Uno e go see go Nigeria, oh, we're BNC. Uno e go see no uwa ni ne. Uno column na so. Darlo no, darlo no, darlo no. Ufodun di madan oraba. Ufodun di madun oraba. I've run the party, I. But far question. Need five pota. Amen. Uno an even neku. Ufodun di madun oraba, I've run the Labor Party. Ufodun di madu n'eva, abro ondi Labour Party. But ifunaya, unuwe, Makamua, Makawanono, Makadi, Unupe tobe, unuweputa, Unusi, okui fuka, Ayaga akwarono, lueni si. Anamekanunu riné. Biko, Manku ogonogo ku, Maká, Eba bubem. Nibainasi, Ighe sinu no mama we puti lo. And tata, unuwe go see go, Anye si go nono, mama, anye yapogu ilo. Also se kene, Kange kene ndianambra. Oga ilo lo leba. Ndiné, Wada yani riné, Unuwe kulayinu zo. Obri fe go, Obri ipoku fa iputa. Ndianambra, Wado ri yani riné munadim. So anamekanunu. Anamekanunu, ifeni ine, Ndima du ne ku keta, Eziamatu, Makapito be, be do from eba. Ifeni ine uwanine nasi, Pito be fuka, Pito be fuka, Omelaka, Omé ofuma, Omé, ifeni nendiu uwanine ne eziamatu, Oh eba, go be do. So anamekanunu riné, Maká, Ifunaya, Unu ne go see, One nono, Pito be, daluno. Ayi bundi Labour Party. Ayi bundi Labour Party. Ona Labour Party, Kapita, Na puti zo ochichi ichi Nigeria. Biko ndine ki fe kusino, kusino, biko, Manku ogonogo ku, bet genti, ma ifeni neku dempa. Ona Labour Party, Kapito be, Na puti izo ochichi ichi Nigeria. Onye obunama. Ndini ine nazo ochichi, President Nigeria. So so, ayiwa na Labour Party, Wonye eziamatu. And oh maka onuwa, Bundianambra State. Oh eba, go be do. Obusife eziamatu. Even now, yondianambra, Ayinene bo one. Nketina i ni ru ka. Amama ine me partye ba, but Icha bo one. Pito biada zozochichi Nigeria, maka obuonye ibu. Makao buonye Catholic. Makao si southeast. Ona zozochichi, Makao lulo, Omé ofuma, Obuonye Nigeria. So so nyawa ge weto udona Nigeria. So so nyawa ga lo 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 niyadema. So onye putagwa isi, Pito be na zozomakao obuonye ibu. Ezio ku, onyebu ko obu. But ochichi ona zozobuchi Nigeria, Idozin Nigeria, Anano azia maka obu mwa Nigeria, Me ofuma. So ifeni nowanianambra State. Ayinide unkwado. Unkwado ayinide bo. Bosi election, Jekwado one nono. Jekwado dia i, bu pito be. Ayi bundi Labour Party ezio ku. But, Pito be, Bu mwa fo Anambra State. And ifeni ine, Enne ku makie, Enne eziamatu, Eba koku, go be do. So ayiwa, Genye Nigeria, Yeh pito be hundred percent. Unuwe anu even neku, Hundred percent, Maká, nketini ru ka. Achineke noneni gue, Ma ifo ji we weputaliye, Kozo ochichiye, keta. Inanananigiriya keta, Sobuni ine, Ayine we kalezi. Umua yadeleja okoa, Fajasiya okoa iputa, Fangwe rolo, Ife esika, Hissegriti kalezi. So so keta, Ka iweke, La rola, imamechiya yah ofuma. Make egudino obudu. But ife choro iguandine, Ayiwa, Ka chineke weputa izo Nigeria. Ka kuano otu chineke si we waputa i. Ayine, Also so, ndiné, Kalezi fifty percent, Ndii weke two votes, We weputa onye gachi Nigeria. Oh ayiwa, ndiné kalezi fifty percent. Ndiozo bo ndi youth. Ifa konndine, Ba kondi youth, Ayinabo, Umu ndiné na youth, Aylu seventy-five percent. So iro iputa onye gachi Nigeria, Odia inaka? Odia inaka? So ifendi we si, Chineke nalanya, Keta na Nigeria, Si, o, olua i, Ko. Olu chuku dele monake. Olu chuku dele monake. Ay kusio twa. Makao o dele monake. So ge luru, Oge lugo. Ayiwa bundianambra. Owo noye gawanyi, Makapito be, Maká ayiwa, Onye, Ayinabu pito be. Oh ayiwa ndiné nanambra, We si ime ifendi ocha nafo testify. Maká, Ayia try gi, Tested and trusted. Ifo obuna, Oni ku, Ocha ime olua buja, omegi ebana. Eba webe, obi do we me. So eba webe, Icha weke kolonde Nigeria. Si, ifa woka neku, Obri fa se, Omegi ebbe, And ni ke chineke, Nan kwado, Ndiné, Oge ja buja, menke kaleye. Oku, inanan manifesta i, Oku go maka, Security. Security Nigeria. Odin, Ezibote mpa, keta. Ma ki weni kipaleba na Nigeria. Weni kisi eba, Julumoto jo, uwaosa. Obusino jumoto jo uwaosa. Ogo maka pime, Eyo maka pitecha cha nafo mpa. Ogo yana yana, Ni tobi so na pime, amanwe. Baké yobo, Baké yaba de olo. Patshana. Nibai si, uko jeman, yaka yabo. Ayiwa. So people talanba. Ute deyala yai. Maká, ayiwa mta. Ayiwa mta, ayiwa mta. Ito uluwa kwado, Mwana, Mwana ofuma. Opeye onye pike, Wati kaya nges. Onye pike, Oka onye ofuma. And onya, Chineke we, chineka mwa, Webopete ama anpasik, Kusin fano. So ifendi Icha itso, My partye webe. Igeri. Igeri. So biko yaka. Obusino ra, mato se, yaka yara. Akawa olo ke mato, Chima ochichi, lo bro di chichi, Na nisha. Unuwe di papa olo, Ni mada jo olo. So biko arma, ekta hebe pike. Ano masika, chake ma we pike, Cause you do. Cause you do know. So matisa se yaka, Wa anpasik. Menke icha, Molo, na kalo. Menke yaka yaka, to make it, or no make it. So biko matisa oto yaka, Nigeria, daluno.
Yes.
Obusino amaro, lo lo lo.
Excellence.
Yes. Yawa, yana, wala. So. Biko. Lasso. Makariki. Ayasi, o, daso i. Makariki. Daluno. Daluno. Biko, o, 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 o. Say come from West, I think it's fifty degrees. First of all, I'm going to pay today, Of this opportunity, To be with women of Anambra. Irrespective of party and nation, They did today honor me, As their former person. That so grateful to all Anambra women. But they know, That loyalty and support. What we are experiencing today, In Nigeria, Is well known to everyone. Today, We need, A person, That can unify this country. That can bring support to this country. A person, Who is pito be and party. Baba. Because of our country, We have to say. And the good thing today, I have just always said about to be, You can see, From what he has done in Anambra State. And the people he has worked, They can testify to be consistent and honest they can do. We are not, It's always not called nothing for the question of a government of Nigeria, Because it's not a woman. It's not running because of the South, because the South is everything. It's not running because it is a star. It is running because it's all the right. It's not because, People have, People have, it's a principle, And you know it's worth it. We can testify in Anambra State, And that can add To his agenda. If you look past the whole state, A lot of women, What we do in the past, in the past eight years. Both, Whether they're Labour Party, Whether they're other party, They came to me. That showed you the law, And the belief, And the truth. They are in their heart. Then I want to express my thankfulness To the women of Anambra State. For this show of love, All our appeal to everybody, Please let your BBC, Make sure people, It's important to people. Why I say it's important to people? You cannot change the government if you're not part of it. And this very election, It's all about me and you. Women in Nigeria, constitute the largest number of sector of people That can vote in Nigeria. Because people are twenty percent Of the voters registered in Nigeria. The second, If it's open, If you combine the youth and the women. And that's not. For the time, And really women in Nigeria have to write them, Write safe outside, Write that in the safe of Nigeria. This is a country, And by the end of the day, We have our machines. And it's time to examine our machines. Father, very dear people, Hold your position, Think that and vote, Project the polls and vote Labour Party. Labour Party is the way forward. Labour Party, The love of our people, Pito be and you see that. And they see That it's formidable. They are not only competent. They are not only confident, they are capable, they are able, in three different worlds, and they will unify themselves. In a man, first of all, has talked about, progress, and people, and the car. Which, is very important, because to betray the women, betray the people. You get, they get, they get, you get, they get, they get. And children, they get, people, who, who that, try. There will be jobs, because it will explode, job, it will explode. There will be security, there will be health. If lots of our children, are beaten, and died, from infant mortality. We, Nigeria has the highest rate of infant mortality, the whole world. And showing, the health, alright. We will be able, to cut down, infant mortality. Will be able to secure, and unify, this contribution, one of the important things, we will do. The most important thing, I want to say, women, in everything, Peter B, do. He give his word. But now, I want to ask the people, to the present, or be the present, that respect our people in Nigeria. All the workers we pay, if you don't contribute, go over there. Yeah, oh very, very important, yeah, people are open to, open their hands, open up their, to them. So I want to thank each, and every one of you, I feel to you, to please go out, and get your peace. Your BBC, is more important, and money. It is your only ticket, to change, the morality of Nigeria. And by the first principle, we, and the bigo party, will take you. Thank you very much, and love them. Now. Omo, 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 omo. It says, ma kere kiri, tuwa e kira, wa ya kiri, kia kira. Omo ni, kira kiri, kira kiri, kira kiri, kira kiri. Omo ni, kira kiri, kira kiri. I got, I got, I got, I got. It's all about, it's all about, it's all about, it's all about. I got, I got, I got, I got. Oi, wa ya kiri, kira kira, people, they're very, 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 very. I got, I got, I got, I got. I chine, I chine, I chine. Ma, it's a, it's a, point of attention, ah, kaba, ah, um, eh, it's a, very good, oh. Omo ye la, na, ka, every day, ka, we will go away, so. Thank you very much, and excellency. Thank you, omo, omo, omo. Let me see, a part of us. People, Lord, Jesus, if they're mad, thank you for giving, also they have to learn to do. I got, I got, I got, I got. I got, I got, I got. Thank you very much. It's a master, it's a master. People, yes, it's a, it's a, follow, follow, it's a, it's a. It's a, it's a. It's a, it's a. So, the one thing, eh, eh, you, most of the nation, eh, eh, eh. I got, I got. They, 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 they. They go back, they, they. Oh, my God. You better, you better. It's a, it's a. Nigeria, it's a, it's a. Oh, my God. I got, I got, I got. 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 It's a, it's a. It's a, it's a. I need to give this, eh, eh.
Hello, hello.